Item number three, Establishment of Coro.
René Rodríguez is absent. Cesar Nevárez?
Here.
Ralph Turan?
Here.
Mayor Eliá García?
Here.
Victor Pérez?
Here.
And Ivan Colombia López?
Here.
Mayor, we have a Coro.
Item number four, Public Comment.
We have a public comment form from Miriam Cruz. It will be read by Adriana Rodríguez. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Ms. Rodríguez, will you please speak into the microphone?
Dear City Council Members and Staff, I write to you because it is with enormous regret that I am unable to attend today's meeting, regular meeting for City Council. This is my written public comment and my comments on the agenda item eighteen, Discussion and Action on City Engineer Firm Quote on Creating a Roundabout on Stockyard and Cielo Azul. First, and always thank you all for your service. I was able to watch the last meeting online and want to thank the council members for understanding and promoting that you cannot put a price on safety. Second, I would like to point out that I do not believe that the constituents' information is being kept private. Any form, email, backup material that is not from a city's department or a number of home addresses. For example, in today's backup material, which is available online to the public in PDF format, Mr. Robert Renterías and Ms. Mary Pérez's boards and commissions applications are attached and their addresses, home phone numbers, and emails are clearly visible. Also, the meeting signing sheet for the city council's park master plan has individuals who attended the name. Who attended the name should be sufficient, but addresses could not have been blacked out. These are just examples of many, but this information could have easily been marked out once scanned to prevent privacy issues. I hope the city considers implementing this private policy. At a very minimum, there should be a disclaimer on all forms and all signing sheets that the information provided might become readily available to the public. Second, I think it would be a great benefit to the public if before any public hearing is held during the city council meeting or any other boards and commission meetings, that a brief summary of what the item is about and what discussions have been had on the topic be disclosed to the public so that they are well aware of what the hearing is about. Even if they do not attend the meeting, to speak on the topic and especially since backup material is only available online and not at the city council meetings or any board and commission's meetings, at least none that have attended. Third, in the Vista Bonita State Subdivision, I fail to see where a park will be built in that subdivision.
Ms. Rodríguez, your time is up.
I need like a little of a paragraph more.
Denied.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
No more speakers, Mayor.
Item number five, Certificate of Appreciation to the Scouts, BSA Troop Crew Twenty-One, Coffee Posse Run Club, El Paso Executive Lions Club, Adriana Rodríguez and Alejandra Valades for the cleanup and property on Rachel Street, April twenty-ninth and May fifth, two thousand and eighteen. On May fifth, different volunteer groups came together to assist an elderly lady residing on Rachel Street to clean her property. This lady had received multiple code violations and was struggling to comply when she contacted code enforcement for assistance. Staff immediately took action and contacted several volunteer groups to come and assist. This Heart of Gold recognition certificate is all about showing appreciation to the people who love to contribute to causes, whether it is for the homeless, elderly, animals, orphans, poor, addicts, or something else. Volunteers have hearts of gold and volunteering takes a sheer selfless sense of wanting to give back to the community. Their devotion and commitment needs to be acknowledged in expression of its, if not in kind. The City of Socorro wants to show their appreciation to the Scouts, BSA Troop and Crew Twenty-One, Coffee Posse Run Club, El Paso Executive Lions Club, Sonia Olivas, Esteban González, Adriana Rodríguez, and Alejandra Valades. At this time, can I have a motion to move items sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one in that order?
Motion to move items sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one in that order, next on the agenda?
Second.
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Item number sixteen, Discussion and Action on the Final Plot Approval for Vista Bonita State Subdivision Unit One, Being a Portion of Track Five, Block Twenty-Four, San Elizario Grant.
I have an update on that item. Is, we're trying to coordinate a meeting with the developers, the residents from Rancho Viejo, and staff. And that's kind of what we're working out right now. It's just a date. So I'm waiting on the response from the residents. I just sent out an email yesterday.
Is the motion postponed?
Or, we don't need a motion because we'll continue bringing it up until we have the agreement.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, Discussion and Action on City's Engineer Firm Quote on Creating a Roundabout on Stockyard and Cielo Azul.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
There's been discussion about looking at the intersection of Stockyard and Cielo Azul for possibility of putting a roundabout. And what we did is we went back and took a very preliminary look at the intersection. And there's several, I guess a couple of different options we can do to place a roundabout. One is a full-fledged roundabout, one lane.
I can barely hear you.
Okay, one, okay, I'm sorry. There's a couple of options we can do to construct a, any, a roundabout in any location. One is called a... Will you provide the backup on the layout? Would you, I'm sure you've provided that information? Did you get that information that has a layout?
Yes.
Yes, okay. One is just called a traffic circle. Traffic circle, basically, all you do is put a raised circle, the median, the middle. And that really, what it serves more purpose is just to slow traffic down. It's a deterrent for cars to speed through the intersection. You have to go navigate around the circle. And that's going to be the, the one you see, just the two little circles in the middle. Yeah, it's called Proposed Traffic Circle. To construct this kind of a traffic circle, we estimate it's probably going to be roughly about just under a hundred thousand dollars to construct this. This is striping, the concrete, you know, all the signings required for this type of a traffic circle. Then, of course, it's just a, just an estimate. I mean, we didn't really spend a whole lot of time. We just wanted to make sure it was going to work and to give you an idea of what the cost is. The second kind of a roundabout is your full-fledged roundabout, the other one. It's a series of, I guess, three circles. That is, you know, a full-fledged circle. And you can see, it would require a... It would not require any right-of-way. I think it would be, it would fit within the right-of-way. So right-of-way would not be an issue. You would have one lane going all the way around and cars would have to, can navigate around that circle, you know, without any, without stopping or without a signal. On this type of a roundabout, we estimate that be approximately three hundred thousand dollars to construct those. And this is your, your full-fledged one-lane roundabout. This is, as you've seen in presentations, it does provide some safety. There's another item that we've been looking at and we've talked already, but to Socorro, but the possibility of obtaining funding from the state. The state does, they're, in talking to the state, they are going to be, I guess, soliciting for safety funds. They do have, every year, they do also request call for safety projects. These type projects do qualify for safety funding. And, you know, again, that kind of project, they provide up to ninety percent of the funding to construct this type of a project. And then, on top of that, the city would still get their disadvantaged county, a city discount. So you're possibly looking at paying probably about five percent of the cost. We're in the process of looking at not only this intersection, but a lot of other intersections that are in the major thoroughfare plan. What we would like to do is just to go ahead and recommend the, the intersections that we think qualify for safety improvements, put them in the master, in the master thoroughfare plan so that when they do come up or call for projects, we have the projects ready and we have the plan backup ready to submit for projects. So that's kind of, I think, our goal is to do that. We were planning to try to present the thoroughfare plan today, but I think it's important that we take the time to add the roundabouts in there because when you have a plan behind your submitted for projects, it gives you a lot, increase of a possibility of getting selected for funding. So if you have any questions, I can take them now.
Mr. Rodríguez?
I'll make a motion to delete this item. There's no need for it as... The reason why is because it, Techstat does have a call for projects. They're category eight funds, okay? It's for disadvantaged, for safety projects. What we need to do is get the... Let's just delete the lineup. We'll bring it back. We're going to do the thoroughfare plan right now, which in conjunction with that, we can just put those in there so that when the call for project goes out, there's, because of safety issues, their plan is ninety, ninety-ten, which will be responsible for ten percent of that. On top of that, we're disadvantaged municipality, so they will give us another seven percent off of that. Basically, we're going to end up paying somewhere between two to three percent, okay? So what we need to do is delete this because this is mute. It doesn't matter. We could just put it into the thoroughfare plan. So that's what I'm saying. Just delete it. We'll bring it, we'll bring it back because we're going to talk about the thoroughfare plan right now. And what we do is that if we put it into the thoroughfare plan, that's going to help us so that Techstat can say, hey, we already have these plans in place. That'll give us time for us to do and make a, look at the safety and the speeding and all of that stuff that needs to be compiled, all that data, so that we can go ahead and present it to Techstat because they are category eight. Those don't have to go to the MPO only just to put them in there, to program them. But the category eight is totally different. We don't have to be approved by the MPO, okay? So that's why I'm saying, delete this item. We don't need it.
Mr. Pérez?
Well, there's a motion on the floor, but I do, I still have questions though. And for my own clarification. The picture with the larger circle, central circle?
Three circles.
I would imagine that that's the more expensive one?
That is correct.
Okay. And so what is it, and I guess I'm having a hard time. What is the difference between a three hundred thousand dollar one and a ninety thousand dollar one?
Really, it's the traffic that you, the intersection has. With the higher volume of traffic, you want the larger roundabout. For lower volume, just for lower, lower. That one's just more to, to slow down the cars from crossing through the intersection. It's just, I can't remember the term now, but it just slows the traffic down. But the traffic circles are just a speed, basically just slow traffic down, what you're doing.
Because I see that, that there are, on the smaller one, I would say, I would think that those are crosswalks? Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, because I still think that would be kind of dangerous because you're having a free flow of traffic, but yet you have crosswalks. I just, I think that's...
Well, those cross, that's the one, I guess, drawback of a roundabout is that, you know, pedestrian crossings. Typically, I think those sidewalks might be pushed a little further back or before they get to the roundabout. So we would detail it more, in more detail if we were to design one. But yeah, the pedestrian traffic needs to be able to get across there. So we would have ramps at every intersection, every corner to allow pedestrians to cross. That was not much different from a regular intersection. It's not going to, you still got, you still have a... Well, I don't remember. This one has stop signs or not, but you still have stop signs here.
So Madam Mayor, if I may at this time, rescind my motion and motion, make a motion to delete?
Second.
Mayor, for the record, Mr. René Rodríguez arrived to the meeting at six thirteen. And we have a speaker for this item, Adriana Rodríguez for Miriam Cruz.
I would respectfully ask City Council to instruct the city manager to go out for bid on this item. Sadly, a due diligence was not done when creating this quote. I'm not sure how many, if any, roundabouts or circles the local office of the engineering firm has built previously. But it is clear the engineering firm did not go out to the location since the imaging is not to scale and the bottom left sidewalk is in the wrong location. That looks like the sidewalk, but is it sand? No side parking was considered or mapped. Also, price does not consider the landscaping, which should not be much since the desert plants are readily available. The traffic circle would not require drivers to turn the axle of their cars enough to force them to slow down. Safety is essential in this intersection with so many daily walkers and many children walking and biking the area. At this intersection, a roundabout is necessary because of how the Cielo Azul neighborhood was built almost two decades ago when was, when it was part of the county. But also because how the new subdivision south of Cielo Azul has been allowed to be built within the past year and allowing it not to provide proper and safe line to view of traffic.
Ms. Rodríguez, your time is up.
Thank you.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia López?
Item number twenty, Discussion and Action on Approval to Appoint Robert Rentería to the Board of Adjustments as an alternate.
Mayor?
Mr. Rodríguez?
Motion to approve?
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, Discussion and Action on Approval to Appoint Mary Pérez to the Historical Landmark Commission, Place Two. Mr. Turan?
I'm sorry, no break, if I may, right, for full disclosure. Mr. Pérez is a distant relative, okay? So it is like way back in the, not like third or fourth classes, I believe. So I just want to make sure that, that I bring him up, okay?
Thank you. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia López?
Can we move item number twenty-two next?
Second, I mean, make a motion to move item twenty-two for next?
Second. René Rodríguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Sirene Inn of New Lee Appointed Commissioner. Back to Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Consent Agenda?
René Rodríguez is absent, Cesar Nevárez?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Pérez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia López?
Yes.
Item number eight, Public Hearing of Ordinance Four Forty-Two for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro Master Plan and the Proposed Resoning of Track Six Eight, Block Seven, Socorro Grant from A-one Agricultural to R-two Medium Density Residential to Allow the Construction of Apartments.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
It's a public hearing?
Oh.
Six twenty-nine, public hearing is now open. Six thirty, public hearing is now closed. Item number nine, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Four Forty-Two for the Proposed Amendment to the City of Socorro Master Plan and the Proposed Resoning of Track Six Eight, Block Seven, Socorro Grant from A-one Agricultural to R-two Medium Density Residential to Allow the Construction of Apartments.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Pérez?
Very quickly, if staff would just provide a, I guess, some kind of statement as to why they're varying denial and then approval. Denial by planning zoning and approval by the departments. One by the commission and one by the department.
Approval by the commission, denial?
Well, there's, okay, there is, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial and then the Planning and Zoning Department recommends approval. So why did you... and then the Planning and Zoning Department recommends approval, so why the disparity?
Uh, o- okay, so through our subdivision, there's nothing that we can impose on the developer to deny. And just the commission felt strongly to deny.
So then they've met all the, all the
Correct. There's, there's nothing that we could impose that we have in our ordinances
Okay.
that would not allow them to bu- build.
No, I just wanted, wanted the clarification, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan? Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 10, public hearing of ordinance 443 for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro Master Plan and rezoning of tracks 11 and 11A, block six, Socorro Grant from A1 agricultural to R2 medium-density residential to allow the construction of 96 apartment units. 632, public hearing is now open. 632, public hearing is now closed. Item number 11, second reading and adoption of ordinance 443 for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro Master Plan and rezoning of tracks 11 and 11A, block six, Socorro Grant from A1 agricultural to R2 medium-density residential to allow the construction of 96 apartment units.
Motion to approve ordinance 443?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez?
Yes.
Item number 12, discussion and action to approve job description for grants coordinator in the grants writing department.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, uh, this position was approved on May 3rd by council. Um, it's the, um, the, the title of the position is Grants Coordinator in the Grants Department. The, um, the position requires a bachelor's degree in public administration or a related field, or a, an associate's degree and five years of experience in, in, or in, uh, any equivalent combination of experience and training. Does anyone have any questions about the position or the description? No? We, uh, basically, we did our research, looked around, and, and this is a basic description for, for grants coordinators around town.
Just
Sir, Mr. Perez?
And the, and that's fine, I just would like to see, if possible, where it says associate's degree for the department to define what kind of associate's degree, because is it associates in arts and associate, I was you're, you already have, you're, you're delineating what kind of bachelor's degree. But what kind of associate's degree are you asking?
So we could add, uh, a, a, so, well, the associates are usually general studies, um,
Public administration or any related field.
Something, something that, that will tighten it up a little bit more.
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean
Got it, okay, I'll add that. Is there anything else that you have a concern or a question about?
No, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to include the, the recommendation on the associate's degree.
Second.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez?
Yes.
Item number 13, discussion and action to approve job amendment to the Planning and Zoning Director Job Description for City Planner Development Director Job Description.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Okay, so the, the reason for the proposed amendment to this position, uh, from Planning and Zoning Director to the, uh, City Planner Development Director is because the city is experiencing rapid growth. And, uh, we're look, we, we're in need of a, someone who understands urban design and development in order to help the city, uh, manage the development and growth in a smart and well-organized way. Uh, this position also carries a responsibility of economic development. And, um, the planner will be responsible for identifying, um, uh, e- uh, economic growth and investment opportunities. Um, I gave you an updated description and only, um, and, and the updates are highlighted. So the only changes are that one, uh, that one phrase up at the, on, in the first paragraph. And also under the minimum qualifications.
Ma'am, can you please state the, the section, the sentence, just because
Yes.
the public doesn't have the copy you gave.
So we added, um, organized implementation of urban design as part of development review. And in the minimum qualifications, we added, uh, urban and regional planning to the five years of professional administrative experience in, in that field, basically.
Mr. Perez?
And I think that's great, but can I also suggest that we add a preferred, uh, member of the American Association of Certified Planners?
What we added was, and, and that was actually in the original description, so it wasn't highlighted, but we did add, uh, certified professional engineer preferred. And that's, that's in the line right above the, uh, line that has the highlight.
But, but what I'm saying is that certified professional engineer is different from a certified, uh, planner.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you have a planner, somebody that has a planning, uh, as part of the association, then you know that you're getting somebody that has been kept up with their training and those kinds of things.
Okay.
And so it just helps getting the, the best person possible.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I, I agree, I agree. Um, but if we do that, it's gonna be very difficult because of the salaries that we
But I just said preferred.
No, no, oh, preferred?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, okay, that's fine, that's fine. I just, because I, I looked into that as well, and 140.
Yeah. No, I, I know.
I mean, it's, okay, I just
Ms. Velamos?
Question, um, the salary that we were paying Mr. Ochoa was, what, I don't remember, did we put a range prior to hiring him, or did we have a set?
It was from 60 to 70,000.
Uh-huh.
Okay, uh, and right now we're upping it to 90, just because of the requirements that we're asking for. So this person will specialize in land use planning and predominantly concerned with the regulations of land use development, which is a higher requirement. And we're, we weren't able to get that type of candidate with the salary that we were offering, so that's the reason why right now that we have a vacancy and because of the growth, that we saw the opportunity, let, let's try to amend this ordinance, since council has been talking a lot about economic development, this was a perfect opportunity to kinda up our, that position.
Okay, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and this is awesome, you know, with all, do you think we're gonna have a hard time finding somebody that, I, I'm sure we're not gonna find an, an exact match, but are, are, do we have leniency?
Do we, I'm sorry, do we have what?
Are we gonna be lenient, do we have leniency?
Leniency?
Depending on the, uh, the type of applicants we get?
Okay, so you see, the w- range is pretty high, and the reason why we have that range is because we have to take into consideration skills and experience and also education. Um, I don't believe we're gonna have a difficult time finding someone. Um, in fact, I think that we're probably gonna get a lot of candidates. Um, this position is, is very necessary, because as you all know, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. This is something that I think the city's been needing for a very long time. I think the range is, 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 is good. Um, cour- of course, if we're, if we end up finding a candidate that's on the high end of that, all the better for the city, okay? If we do find that it's difficult, and I don't see, I don't foresee that, um, if we have to come back and increase, I think we should, because I think this is very important. I think it's very important, I think the City of Socorro's been needing this for a very long time.
But to answer your question, yes, we do have that flexibility. If, if, but depending on the skills, that's why we have the range from 60 all the way to 90, just depending on the candidate pool that we get, we have that flexibility.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Perez?
No, I just wanna go ahead and, and amend my motion to include, uh, the suggestion regarding the, the, uh, being a certified planner uh, preferred or a member of the association, the related association.
Pref- preferred?
Preferred, yes.
Okay. Yes, second.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez?
Yes.
Item number 14, discussion and action to authorize a mayor and chief of police to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Canutio Independent School District for the fiscal year 2018.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Question.
Mr. Perez?
Uh, this is the one, we've already seen this, didn't we approve one?
Yeah, but we already did it with the different schools, but we have to do it
I get you.
as, as they, as they come.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Well, we're good.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 15, discussion and action of approval to waive the building permit fees for the proposed construction of in addition to the Socorro Police Training Facility located on Vineyard Road.
Oh, motion to approve the waiver?
Second.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Item number 17, discussion and action on the approval of Resolution 542 to adopt the City of Socorro Parks Master Plan.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lopez?
Yes.
Item number 19, discussion and action to direct city staff and attorney to look into dissolving our current transportation reinvestment zone.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan? Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Do we have anything for executive session? For executive session?
I would, I would suggest deleting that one, because we keep postponing it, and the City of Oaxaca is going to pay.
Do we have a motion to delete item numbers 23, 24, 25, and 26?
Motion to delete items 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Second.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Let me second something.
644, meeting adjourned?
This is like a record. Let me second something, maybe. Not as fast as you know.